All right, it's 6:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting to order. We'll start with a flag salute and invocation by Sergeant Bill Downey.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray?
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We thank you for this night that you've given us where we can freely assemble and conduct the business of our community. May all of us seek to open our hearts and minds to your wisdom, Father. And as Solomon asked for wisdom, we ask that you would bestow wisdom upon us, that each of us would apply your wisdom in doing our daily tasks and serving this community. And Father, we do ask your providential hand on this community that we will grow and thrive for years to come. Father, we're thankful for the sacrifice of your son, Jesus, who willingly shed his blood for our sins. We beg your forgiveness, Father, when we sin and fall short of the expectations that you have for us. As we go forward with this meeting tonight, Father, may we all work together in peace, love, and in unity. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
All right, first, the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull microphone.
Microphone, Pete.
I'd like to pull item, "I request to pay K&amp;G Striping." Striping on Wall Street has not been finished, same as it was two weeks ago.
Pete, that's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
That's not on the agenda. It was pulled.
Oh, it was pulled.
It's a request to pay on page two.
Yeah.
Those are the minutes. Here's the agenda.
It's what?
Right here, this is the agenda right here. You've got the minutes right there. There you go, here. Here's your agenda right here.
This was on page two. What's this?
These are the minutes. Here's your agenda right here.
Okay.
All right, so that's already been pulled from last time.
Yes, it's not on there.
I would like to pull also the invoice for, I don't see an invoice. I just see on the consent agenda paying for demolition of the house at, on Hill Street, 323 Hill.
I concur. I believe that the basement has not been properly or appropriately removed, so we need to pull that for further review.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Is the motion to accept the consent agenda minus the bill?
Minus the bill.
Okay. A second?
A second?
I'll second it.
You didn't.
I thought that was a second.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Yes. All right, next, we have a swearing-in of city manager and as well as Matthew, Tim, and myself. Diane? Diane, do you do that?
I do.
Felt like I was marrying you.
Huh?
Felt like I was marrying you for a second.
All right. I think the commissioner would like the three commissioners or maybe Kelly over here. Did you get your picture? Raise your right hand. I solemnly swear and affirm.
I solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Fort Scott.
Of the City of Fort Scott.
And faithfully discharge my duties.
And faithfully discharge my duties.
As the City of Yolby City Commissioner.
As the City Commissioner.
City of Yolby City Manager. Of the City of Fort Scott.
Of the City of Fort Scott.
For help and loss.
So help me God.
All right, and I think we have a plaque for recognition of Randy Nichols. Randy, you started as commissioner April of 2016, so five years. And I just want to say, you know, over the last year, you know, I've gotten to know you better. We don't always agree or whatever, but I think, yeah. But, I mean, after a year, let's personally know how much time you got to put in to do this. And so I do want to say appreciate the time and effort you did put in to do this, no matter our disagreements or what. I mean, it takes a lot, and we do appreciate for, you know, a little over five, five and a half years, so I appreciate that, Randy.
Thank you, Josh. It's been a great experience.
Yeah, and also I think Jackson and Brad have something, another recognition.
Yes, as a member of the staff of Fort Scott, the City of Fort Scott and the members, we have, you know, we have had a commitment for the last six months of an individual that has done a wonderful job for us when we really needed it. And that is Mark McCoy. And we want to recognize him at this time with a plaque, and Jackson's going to read what's on the plaque.
Mark McCoy, in recognition of outstanding service to the City of Fort Scott and residents of Bourbon County, Kansas, in leading our city forward, August 10th, 2021 to January 4th, 2022. City of Fort Scott, we appreciate you, Mark, very much.
Not yet. All right, up next, item number four, reorganization of city commission and election of mayor, commission president.
I would nominate Kevin Allen as the mayor.
I'll second it.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
No, and if I can, I'd like to elaborate on that. Nothing personal to anybody. I understand this motion is going to carry. However, a question has come up in this commission several times about removing Commissioner Allen's censure. We'd ask for, I'd ask for clarification from the attorney. I think other people had said clarification was gotten. And I just can't, while someone still has a censure on them, I can't support the vote. I don't have anything personal against Commissioner Allen. I don't. But, I mean, there were a couple of items in here. One was listed as a should-do, one was listed as a will complete by the committee that put that censure in place. If Commissioner Allen wants to complete that one item that was listed as a will too, I would be the first one to make the motion to remove his censure. But I think that as city representatives of the people that elected us, that when something like that is put upon us, that we should set the standard higher for ourselves and not expect anything less of ourselves than what we would expect for either our city employees or our citizens. So again, I had to dig this stuff up myself, take a look at it because we couldn't get clarification in the last two meetings where this was requested. And I didn't want to just throw a no vote out there on behalf of Commissioner Allen with at least explaining why I was voting the way that I was. So with that, my vote will be no.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Well, thanks to everybody, even Tim.
I'll always be honest with you.
I'm good with you. I'm good with you. It's okay. There's a lot to that. So, the next item we have is the election of the commission president. Meeting in nomination. I would personally like to nominate Josh Jones. He's done a good job as a mayor, and I think that he would do a good job as a president if I was.
I would second that.
If I was gone.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Next is the election of Bourbon County Regional Development Incorporated representative. This is, this again needs a nomination. And I believe before, Josh, were you working on it?
Yeah, I've been on the board. And I mean, I feel like I bring a lot to it. And I mean, I'd like to stay on there, but if not, I understand. So, I mean, if someone else wants to be on there, I understand. But I really, I mean, it's something I enjoy. It's something I feel like I can bring a lot to them, so.
I would nominate Josh to be Regional Development Rep.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes. Up next is the election of the land bank representative.
I would like to nominate Tim Van Hooky for that. I think it's something, you know, obviously he's put in his first couple of meetings, shown that I think he, something, he has a passion for us. I think he'd be good for it, so I nominate Tim.
I would second.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes. And the last one is election of Fort Scott Housing Authority delegate.
I would nominate Matthew Wells as our Fort Scott Housing Authority delegate.
I second.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes. Okay, up next is public comments.
No one signed up.
No one signed up, so no one can speak.
Are you kidding me? The first time he's mayor and no one signs up for speaking?
Thank you to everyone. Thank you to everyone standing. Okay, skip that hurdle. Old business, consideration of land bank ordinance number 3599, amendment of formation aboard. Who's up for that?
I think this ordinance just changed the verbiage and how the members are appointed.
Okay, there's no one to.
They would like it to be select, be the banking industry and different industries. They would be given, like, first consideration.
Mark, was there anything that you wanted to add to that? Just because you got the plaque already doesn't mean you don't have to work.
I was able to turn my microphone on, so no, I believe that how it's been restated in here, it meets and the needs and requirements, and it is stated properly. Did you want me to read it for the public purpose, or did you just want to vote on it?
It's totally up to you. I mean, that's your call. If you'd like to read it so where they can hear what's going on, probably be good.
Okay, the land bank board of trustees, appointment, terms, and dissolution. There is hereby established a, established a land bank board of trustee. The board shall be composed of seven members. One board member will be a representative of the City of Fort Scott City Commission. One member will be appointed by the Bourbon County Board of Commissioners. One member will be appointed by the Bourbon County Regional Economic Development, Inc., Board of Directors. The remaining four positions will be appointed by the Fort Scott City Commission and will include the following professions. One individual who represents banking in a term of three years. One individual who represents developers with a term of two years. One individual who represents real estate with a term of two years. And one member at large of the community with a term of one year. These specified positions are recommended but not mandatory. Primary support B, primary support of the board will come from the Economic Development Director of Bourbon County Regional Economic Development, Inc. and staff. It doesn't say that, but that being currently Rob Harrington. The bank C, the bank may dissolve, the bank may be dissolved by ordinance of the governing body without cause. In such case, all property of the bank shall be transferred to and held by the city and may be disposed of as otherwise provided by law. Effective date would be Jill, excuse me, this fourth day of January 2022. It needs a signature of the mayor and attested by our city clerk.
Any discussion?
I'll make the motion to accept as written.
Second.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes. Up next, memorandum of understanding with Bourbon County ready tourism position. I think that's you, Rob. Look at the suit on this guy.
So it actually is an inter-jurisdictional agreement, not a memorandum of understanding. The, what we're trying to do is, there was three paragraphs sent to, at that time, Mayor Jones and Mark, that basically we would like added to the current inter-jurisdictional agreement that states, that states how the tourism director would be paid. The city would continue to pay the tourism director and the benefits. And then it would also, it also says in the paragraph how the rest of the funds that are not encumbered would be.
I was wondering, we talked last meeting, if we had a copy of it yet.
We don't.
One was sent. I emailed it last week to the two individuals I stated, and.
I would take partial responsibility for this. There needed to be some additional wordsmithing of it. And I was unable to accomplish that with the short week. And so I tried to work with Rob today. We were down to the gun, and I wasn't able to make it happen. And so we have verbally discussed the changes. We have verbally agreed to the changes. Bob has agreed. And so, do you have anything to read?
Well, we tried to print it out, and the printer is not working. It says, word is not responding.
No.
He sent something to Mark and carbon copied me, and I knew Mark was making some changes, but I haven't seen it after the changes, so.
The only change that says in the copy that you have, Mayor Jones, is that we added in funds that are not previously been encumbered to the amount. So there are some, some agreements that are attached to the transient guest tax that was not in the original, and there was some worry that it didn't talk about those encumbered funds. And so we added that piece to the paragraph, so.
Would it be possible, since we're meeting tomorrow night on another subject, to maybe get a copy of that beforehand?
I think that's probably the proper way to do it, rather than to vote now without seeing in black and white.
It's a work session. You can't vote at a work session unless you call a special meeting.
Can we call a special meeting right before the work session?
Yes.
I would feel better to actually read it.
What time is the work session? So let's just call for a, yeah, let's just call for a special meeting at 4 o'clock, if that works.
I mean, if you could be back for that in case there's any questions.
I'll be here. That's no problem. I wish, I mean, we literally just tried to print it on Jackson's computer before this, and it's like.
Well, we can move it on.
You want to table it for right now, and then, and at the end of the meeting, if it's not available for further review, then we could put it on the beginning of tomorrow's.
Yes.
And then you can have a special meeting at 4:25 to 4:30.
I'll make a motion to table this till the end of the meeting.
Second.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes. Item C, Mayor Jones amend vote on ARPA bonus payment.
Yeah, last meeting, we made a motion to give bonuses to some of the personnel. There's some questions raised about some people just starting, maybe a week ago, getting the same amount as everyone else. And so I just want to amend that to go based off days started last year and on a 365 accrual basis. So the $2,000 bonus divided by the 365 goes off days from the day they started. They started middle of last year. Does that make sense?
It's something we didn't cover last time, though, was, we didn't say, is it just, you know, patrol officers? What about detectives or supervisors as well?
Well, that's the other thing I just want to add. It was all non-exempt, and I'd like to add exempt. And I'd also like to add the full-time EMS, which I believe there's five, full-time, four or five. So I'd like to add those and also add in the exempt employees also.
What's the start date you wanted to amend it to?
Well, it would go off of last year, but the people that only worked partial last year would just go off of the days they were hired and were on the payroll. So if they were here two weeks, they'd get 14 days of that, so. So that'd be my motion.
Will this include the department heads?
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be exempt and non-exempt, yeah.
Yep.
If I could say something, I don't think you can language it as bonuses, but you can language it under the Rescue Act or ARPA.
Right.
As hardship compensation. So, you know, use that kind of language. I'm sorry, I didn't break in, but I want to do it right because we have to count to ARPA for this. So if we use it as a hardship, COVID hardship compensation, because see, we didn't really, the city didn't experience any loss of revenue or, and that's what a lot of the cities did when they gave bonuses, so.
The bonuses would be for that if it was non-personnel, but you can give bonuses through ARPA for emergency personnel and not use the hardship, but.
Well, it, it, it's kind of says that on the front, Josh.
Yeah, so the bonus, so non-emergency personnel, you have to show a decline and have hardship.
Yeah, but if you use a language of what it was, was just hardship.
Right, whatever language you have to use.
Yeah.
I know the meeting I sat through said bonuses were allowed for emergency personnel.
Yeah, it's just a type of, it's just a language thing, yeah.
Okay, so do you need to take a, take a vote on that?
Was there a second?
I'll second the motion to amend it to the language that Kelly has suggested.
As well as the addition of exempt and non-exempt in the start date language as well.
And EMS.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Matt Wells?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes. Appearances, there are none, public hearing, none. Moving on to new business, item A, consideration of appointment of airport advisory board member. Did anybody have any discussion or anything like that? I think we have one of the applicants here tonight.
We have someone recommended.
Yeah, we have, we have recommended, and then we have actually an applicant here tonight also.
Mr. Mayor, down here, what I have in the verbiage, it says, "Consideration of letters of interest to replace Mary Pemberton as a board member. The board received three letters of interest, Paul Acton, Robert Coon, and Sean Goins. Discussion was held about how the voting would take place. The board asked if they could meet privately to discuss. They were advised they could not. The board decided to vote by paper. Each board member wrote their vote on a slip of paper, and Jim Gladbach counted the votes. Larry Davenport said he appreciates that there were three people interested in the position. He said he thinks any of the three people would do a good job." Sorry, "The airport advisory board will be recommending Sean Goins to the city commission to fill the position on this board." That is from the minutes from the airport advisory board. If the board wishes to either accept that, or the board could do the same, if they wish to vote on it, they could do that. That's your choice.
Go ahead, Tim.
I'd make a motion to accept Sean Goins through the airport advisory board.
I second.
Any discussion? I mean, did you guys want to go through the voting process? Or, I know there was others that were adamant about being on there. So what's your guys'? What do you think? Any discussion? No discussion. Call for a vote.
Pete Allen? Pete Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
I'm staying. Item B, discussion to change city zoning regulations regarding fencing and assessing standard fee for license.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners? If you recall, two weeks ago at the last commission meeting, you gave me direction to add an addendum to the zoning regulation regarding fences. What I've provided you is the zoning regulation as it is now. And then the third page is the addendum I have recommended, which it should be an addition. This would be letter J under this particular zoning regulation. Mr. McCoy and Mr. Farmer have both seen this and have approved of it. And so we would respectfully request that you accept it. I think, I think the language is what you were looking for from us in the last meeting. So hopefully it's acceptable to you.
You know, I see fences built all over town, and everyone has different ideas. And I know in big cities, they have, you know, rules that you have to go by all the time. When it just says, I mean, it leaves it pretty open when it says iron, you know, wood slats. I just wonder if, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but there's several fences in town, like they've taken sheets of metal that are used for roofing or the side of your garage, and they laid them on their side and built boxes out of them. There's all kinds of different ideas for fencing. Is there a way to? I mean, I guess when you apply for your permit, you're going to see a drawing of this fence?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. And if you'll notice, I borrowed this language from the City of Topeka, but I added in a sentence right near the end that says, "Fences should not be constructed of non-traditional materials" for the reason that Mr. Mayor you just stated.
Right.
Also, and let me, if I can digress for just a moment. One of the other things that we talked about the last meeting was the approval from you for us to begin requiring permits for fence building. Diane worked hard today to update our website so that it coincides with letter A of the zoning regulation which you have. So we will now be requiring permits for fences. I've asked Diane today to order said permits for our office. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you're exactly right. What this does is when somebody comes in for their permit, this gives us the opportunity to not only look at the materials and the design of the fence that they want to build, to not only look at the materials and the design of the fence that they want to build, but now we can go out actually, look at the location of the site and make sure it's, uh, proper according to zoning regulation.
Right. Yeah, that'll stop a lot of, a lot of problems, I believe, because right now it's just out there.
I believe you're correct, sir.
Billy, the only question I would have on this was two things real quick. I mean, the mayor's right, there are a lot of people that have, a lot of people use the goat fence material around town in depots and a lot, some of it looks pretty good. I'm assuming the iron would cover that, because that's usually still galvanized fence.
Yeah, I guess what I was thinking and I, and again, like I said, I borrowed this from the city of Topeka, is that if I go down to, uh, I'll just say a box store to buy fencing materials, you know, probably not going to find metal in the fencing department, right? But I can find like, uh, you know, black wrought iron or, you know, now they've got some of the, uh, uh, yeah, PVC type fencing, uh, of course it would, would be traditional chain link. Um, that's what we're aiming for is, you know, if I walked into a box store and went to the fencing department, what kind of materials would I find? I suspect we wouldn't find, uh, sheet metal like you were referring to, Mr. Mayor.
And then can we add, just as a suggestion, the finished side of the fence shall face the street. Can we say in there and/or adjacent property?
Sure, absolutely.
Because in some cases, in some cases, the fence faces the backside of the property and you're looking at, it's, it's the wrong way around.
I remember you asked that last time, just looking and seeing here.
Yeah, I, I, and that was the spirit of that was to make sure that the, the finished side of the fence of the slats are facing outwards, uh, even if it's the backside of your fence, right? Uh, but yeah, we can certainly, uh, make that adjustment and I can get that to Mr. Farmer tomorrow.
Well, I think it's good because now we have somebody to hold accountable, it would be you guys, if there's a bad fence built, so we can stick it.
Yes, sir.
And put it in the direction it needs to be.
As, as a point of clarification, um, I would like to address what we're considering the public right-of-way. Um, I have something I wrote up here, everybody can have a copy of it. All right, so as we've established, the right-of-way on 12th Street is thirty feet from the center on both sides. Therefore, according to the decisions that were laid out by the Supreme Court cases that I've listed below, the city of Fort Scott and the KDOT, the area contained in the right-of-way shall be the property of the owner and they shall maintain the land and the access to that land by the public shall not be infringed. Again, I'm referencing three Supreme Court cases that have already dealt with this. Everyone can feel free to read about them. While the rule of the public right-of-way is clearly set out in these decisions, this would dictate that whatever was laid out as the public right-of-way is privately owned, privately maintained land, that the public has a right to use at all times. Again, this is not my interpretation, this is the Supreme Court's interpretation. Clearly, it has been decided that the right of the public to use the right-of-way by blocking this access is unconstitutional. And there are several cases that deal specifically with this. According to the rule of law, according to the Supreme Court and according to the statutes, codes, and the ordinance listed at the beginning of this page of our city, this law has been upheld by the federal government and the Supreme Court. We cannot allow the access to the public right-of-way to be infringed upon. There was a lot of talk last week about where that setback is. We need to be clear in identifying that according to our ordinances, according to the Supreme Court decisions, and according to KDOT, these fences or the other items listed in our previous ordinance cannot be built in the public right-of-way. Public has to have access to those areas at all times.
I think the ordinance, uh, also says, uh, confirms what you're saying, that it is unlawful, uh, to, uh, put a fence or any other structure on that pub, a public right-of-way. Uh, uh, and, and I agree with what you're saying, uh, Matthew. Uh, also, I would like, uh, under, uh, item B, the fence shall be constructed closer to the street than the front setback line. Uh, could you define that, uh, front setback line?
If I can refer back to the conversation from our last meeting, commissioners, that twelve point zero eight point zero one zero is a hundred and thirty-year-old statute. And so then seemingly, it seems like we have a discrepancy between this particular city ordinance and letter D of the zoning regulation, which is only fourteen years old. Perhaps maybe we need to have Mr. Farmer, uh, look at letter D and maybe we need to modify the language.
No, I'm, I'm asking your definition of the front setback line.
When you say front setback, you're talking about like Pete from the center of the road, thirty feet?
I, that's what I'm, 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 I'm asking for the definition of the front setback line. It's in, it's in the, uh, uh, section.
Some people go in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking, please.
This statute, this, sorry, wrong terminology, this ordinance does not specify a specific number. I've been told and informed, uh, that it's, uh, thirty feet on 12th Street according to the county, uh, GIS mapping. Um, and Shane Walker has confirmed that. Um, so, you know, Shane, uh, did a very good job of verifying that for us and providing that information to us. Um, so if we're talking about 12th Street specifically between, uh, National going east to sixty-nine, then you were in fact correct. It is thirty feet from the center of the street.
That's the thing, I think, Bill.
And again, I'm asking, uh, about the front setback line.
Setbacks are from the property line. Not, any, it has nothing to do with setbacks.
Thank you, sir.
It always goes from the property line, which is a right-of-way line. Setbacks have nothing to do with the curb, have nothing to do with the street. Setbacks are set by your zoning regulations. In your zoning regulations, depending if it's R1, R2, R3, whatever, commercial setbacks are different than residential. In your zoning regulations, that sets what your setback is. For, for R1, it's probably thirty feet. Most towns are twenty-five to thirty feet, plus front yard setback. But the setback is from the right-of-way line. It's not from the curb, it is not from any sidewalk, it is from the property line.
So. As I, as I read our, our code on the setback line, the only, only thing that I find is it's five feet. You can't, you can't be, uh, closer than five feet from the property line.
And the zoning regs for the front yard?
Uh, yes. Uh, and, and the side yard.
Well, yeah, yeah, he, what, what Pete's saying is it's, it's a setback from the edge of the right-of-way. So you have.
Oh, it's, it's a setback.
Most houses on R1 are setback, twenty-five to thirty feet.
Yes, right.
The front yard setback is normally different from the side yard and rear yard.
In, in this, it describes, uh, the.
But this ordinance shouldn't say what that is. He's right in saying it's just from the setback line. The setback line is, is defined in your zoning regulations.
Yes, and, and I, and, and then that setback line is defined from the property line.
That is correct.
Yes, and that's what I was asking for clarification. It's not clarified here.
It shouldn't happen. Setback is defined in your zoning regulations, not in an ordinance.
Yes, I agree. But that's, that's what we seem to have confusion here on.
Yeah, I understand. You have every, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump up on.
You should thank him for that.
In the city, most people don't understand what a setback is. That's not unusual. And, and a lot of people think it's from the back of the curb. People try to do it from the center line of the road. None of those are true. Setbacks are always from the property line. Your zoning regulations may need to be reviewed as to what those setbacks are, but that's where they're set at. But setbacks are always from the property.
Is that even with the state of Kansas?
That's everywhere.
Okay, because I, I recall I had a sign put up at one point on Wall Street and they, they measured from the center of the road.
They didn't know what they were doing.
Okay. Well, I wish you'd have been there that day.
Here's the problem, here's the problem, is most people assume that the road is in the center line of the right-of-way.
Right.
That's a bad assumption. Um, in most cases, yeah, they try to do that, but roads are not necessarily in the center line of the right-of-way. And that's your problem when you start doing it.
So then if a property doesn't have its property line staked or marked in some way, how do we know what that is?
You hire a surveyor.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
You could, you could put that in parentheses, the, the setback per zone.
Speaking to, he can't hear you.
You, you could put it in parentheses, per, per zoning regulation.
Yeah, that would be.
Yes.
That, that way you'd have to check the zoning regulation.
Might need a new battery.
Yeah, I'm not a CB.
I want to make sure that we're clearly defining where this line is so that we don't have an issue about arguing about where the public property begins, where the private property begins. So we have one set standard that we can always refer to and whether that's in, like Mr. Earl's suggested, a additional zoning ordinance that we have that clearly states what the setback is. We have, we have what the, what it should be and if we decide to follow this, the way that I presented it, according to what the Supreme Court, KDOT, and everyone else has said, that's fine. If we decide as a city, we want to make our own, we have the right to do that. It clearly says that at the end of the third Supreme Court case that I referenced, that as a city, we have the right to decide that, but we need to have it clearly defined so that there's no argument about what public right-of-way is and where the edge of that setback begins.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So do we need a motion to change this? I believe we do. Would anybody like to make the motion?
I, uh, you know, we, here again, we, we have this thrown upon us at a moment's notice.
Yeah.
With no chance to look at it or, uh, uh, you know, I.
Table it for two weeks? You want to table it till next meeting?
Table it.
Cause I'd like.
Until we get it right.
I'd like to see the additional verbiage that was suggested by Mr. Van Hooky and the additional verbiage suggested by Kelly to be added to it and then revisit it if we could.
Absolutely.
And I would like that five, uh, that setback line, setback line.
Put, put in parentheses.
Uh, defined.
Yes, and have it defined as well.
Yeah, I want to, I want to measure this. What, what? I'm sorry.
Say that again.
That's one robbery.
It wouldn't vary from the property line. It would vary from, you know.
Mr. Mayor.
From the property line, it would have to be measured.
Mayor and Council, Pete, they can't put a number there because it varies based on what it is, R1, R2, R3.
Yes, I, and I, I agree with that, but it does say, those, those should be defined.
They are defined in the zoning regulations. That's why what he stated was as per zoning regulations makes a lot of sense. Because the zoning regulations are where you define. You don't want to define it in two locations. You want it defined in one location and that's your zoning regs. And so if you're questioning what the zoning regs say, then perhaps we should pull them up and look at. But this ordinance, he's right, it should just refer to the zoning regs because we don't want numerous regulations defining what that is. We want it in one location.
Okay. Was that a motion to table, Pete?
Yes, he made a motion to table.
I'll second that.
Tim Van Hooky.
Yes.
Matthew Wells.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes. Okay, up next, discussion of an ordinance to create city business license and associate fee, associated fee. Mark?
Uh, yes, um, commissioners, uh, I've had a number of discussions. What, what I, what I would like to do tonight is initiate a discussion on how the city could go forward by instituting a business license. And there are reasons that cities should enact a business license. It's not for the purpose of only gaining thirty dollars for each license. Information should be on file. Information is necessary for safety and security in the twenty-first century. Things that could be included, should be included, I would highly recommend, recommend, could be included in this, would be things such as the owner's name of the property, the name of the business and the entity that it's identified under. Does this business have insurance? And if so, who is the insurance company? This is not public information. This information would be held and maintained by the city.
Sure.
Um, what is the name of the manager? So that when the fire department is called out or the police department is called out for an incident there, could be, uh, a multitude of different kinds, who do they call? There's a call out that would be on file at the police department, um, excuse me, at, um, uh, nine-one-one, at our dispatch center. So the police departments today, they don't know who to call in many instances. If a burglar alarm goes off, if a fire alarm goes off, they do not have necessary information who to call. It also would, would give you other information on there that would tell you the name of the alarm company. Uh, because, because they need to know that information too. Uh, that would be on file. Uh, other things that could and, and or should be on there, uh, would be things such as your, uh, are you, uh, legally allowed to be in business? Uh, have you paid your taxes? I, I know this from operating other businesses in other small cities, that they require this to be filled out every year. Some of them even wanted to know what your inventory was, which I don't find that to be necessary. However, they do need to know if in your building there are flammable tanks or things of that nature. Because that will, will go to whether or not the fire department will enter your building or not, depending on the type of disaster going on. Or do they need to put on the apparatus to make sure that they have, uh, breathing equipment so that they're entering that facility, uh, appropriately and correctly? Do businesses are required to have a Knox box? Do we have a Knox box on this facility? And if not, uh, the proprietor would be notified that they would need to add a Knox box. Um, I believe that this is for purpose of safety. You know, we've talked a lot about safety. It's the safety of our employees, the police department and the fire department. Um, it's also important that if you operate a business and you're out of town, they know, I would like to have your cell phone number as well as your home number. Uh, maybe you would want to know if you're gone and out of town, that your building was on fire or that it had a burglary or it had a robbery that took place there. Um, and so things of this nature. And so I did, I do not come before you with examples. I would like permission for myself and Kelly or myself and Codes, Bill Downey, just to research this for you. Um, I, I, again, I'm making a recommendation. Uh, I do it from years of having filled it out. And I know that the police chief and the department over in Nevada was very, uh, useful and they, they felt that this was a very important document for them to fill out. This does not go to the county treasurer, it doesn't go to any assessors. That's not the purpose of it. I could answer any questions. I will attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, you and I have talked about this before and probably before commission, I wasn't for it, but after the Eagle Block and things like that. Um, as a business owner, my, my question is going to be, why the fee? And.
So it should, I'm, I'm sorry, I was, so you would recommend no fee?
Well, as a business owner, yes. As a commissioner, maybe not. So I want you, when you come back.
I'll second that.
When you come back, I just need you to have a good reason of why we are charging, you know, what's the charge going to be and why we're going to charge that, what, why that amount, so.
Well, it, it also goes back to like we were talking about, uh, building permits. You know, if you scare too many people off with the price of the building permit, then they're not going to get permits.
Right.
And they're just going to go, but if you make the, the permit fee nominal, then they'll go in there and do the right thing every time.
I, I would agree with you, uh, and also having a codes enforcement department that, that, uh, is out there inspecting what we expect.
Sure.
Um, I think we need to be more proactive in our inspections. And, and it's, it's, it's also there, you're there to educate. You're not there to be an inspector, you're there to educate people. Uh, when I'm with Pete, he gives me an education and I rightfully, uh, am, am more intelligent, more educated by what he says. He knows what he's talking about. And so I would hope that an informed, educated codes department person going out and explaining to a business owner, Mr. Jones, why we're asking you to do this, would be the right thing to do. Also in this, uh, I've talked about, there is a multitude of entities in the city of Fort Scott that do not have numbers, whether that's on their house or on their apartment buildings or on their businesses. And, uh, that's a safety issue for the fire department and the police department. Let's say you're. Let's say you're driving by at 2:00 AM with nothing else to do, and you see smoke coming from a house. There's no numbers visible at the house. What, where do you call it in? They don't know to go to the north end of Eddie, the south end of Eddie. They don't know if it's the 400 block, the 200 block, the 600 block. But if the number on there says 211 Eddie, you can read it. Black houses have white numbers, white houses have black numbers, wherever you put it, it would be the opposite. It should be a reflective number. Our fire department is currently in the process of trying to get, uh, grants so that this can be done. We're not doing this because it's just a fun thing to do. It's a safety issue. Uh, God forbid, there is a tornado that knocks down houses. There are many cities that require this to be painted on the curb. Cause I, I've been to the tornado in Joplin. My son survived that tornado. I went down there that day. And it was a war zone. And the only way you knew where you're at is to look at the curb and see if there's an address on the curb. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not telling people they should do it. I, I would highly recommend you to do it. We could even provide them with a stencil. All they got to do is paint it or spray it on. And we have a wonderful, we have the best volunteers in the world in the city of Fort Scott. We had three hundred and fifty plus people cleaning up downtown. We have the Good Neighbor Action Team. We have Kiwanis Club and Rotary Clubs. These are things that clubs and youth organizations could do for us that would be very easy to do.
When I, when I was a kid, our, our Boy Scout troop did it. Where I lived in Texas, we went around and painted them on all the curbs.
Great idea. We, I believe we have Boy Scouts here.
Do we have curbs though?
Yeah. Uh, well, see, some areas don't have curbs. It's a good point. Yes. So what do you do in that case?
I, I, I don't think we can afford to build them curbs, Pete. Would you like to take this?
No, I, I think, I think it's, it's, it's a cut and dry case. You put it, put it on the curb. If there is a curb, then if there's no curb, you don't.
Yes, I was, I was, I was going to say, if they have a driveway that's concreted and on the concrete, I, I have seen it on the street itself, which is pretty tough because it gets driven over. There's other places, they have little, very small, uh, platform signs. I, maybe I'm saying it wrong. It's only this size, but it's down in the grass. I, I mean, I, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, but in the 21st century, we talked at the last meeting about safety and security. And the reason I would, I would say there's a fee because there's a cost to doing business, and there's a cost for us to do these things and to follow up on it. And I probably just added, oh, you know, like a hundred hours to Diane's job as the person who issues, uh, permits and such. Do you not issue all the permits, Diane?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, yes, she does. Okay, so, yes, sir.
Well, would you also include, uh, the, the rental houses, uh, you know? You know, there are, there are a lot of rental houses in Fort Scott. And would you not include those as well for the person? Who do you, who do you call if, if, if Josh's house is on fire? Do you call the person who lives there or the person owns the house?
That's a great question, and I would need to get more information on that. I think that's a fantastic question, and that's, that's exactly why we come with minds here together.
I can tell you how it happens. One time you find out on Facebook.
Yeah, I, I, I said when I took this job that there's way too much poopy stuff on Facebook, and I would not want to find out from Facebook that my house burned down. Would you want to come up to the microphone, sir?
I had a house and I found out the next day on Facebook it got fired.
Yeah. I, I think that's a good point, though, uh, that, that, the, the owner of the, the business, your name is?
Oh, come on, Mark.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob. You have permission to talk.
Well, I was going to back, uh, Mark up on his business license, just for the simple fact is I was at Joplin as well. And the business licenses that the city of Joplin had were basically the only way they were able to tell businesses that were legally open and that were eligible for FEMA and SBA dollars compared to people just coming in and saying, well, I had a business down there too. And then you had to provide a business license. Well, if you had a business, it was registered with the city of Joplin, were you eligible? And, um, I worked with the Chamber of Commerce on contacting these business owners because there was a list of businesses that were in the disaster area. We reached out to several owners. Some were going to reopen, some didn't reopen. Uh, we were able to clarify and make that list for the, for FEMA and SBA because we had a list of business owners and licenses within the city of Joplin. So it is a great idea for various reasons, and I just wanted to support Mark on that by saying that in peace, so.
I, I agree. It's an excellent idea. I, I want to piggyback on it. Got something else here? I'm going to pass those around to everyone.
You have something for every subject?
We didn't even discuss this, so that's good.
Not every, not every section. I try to keep it short.
That's working together. Thank you, Commissioner.
This, this has to deal with, uh, city contractor license, which I believe should fall under business license, but should be an additional subset called a contractor's license. In addition to the business license, we must have contractor business license to not only protect our citizens, not only to provide needed income for our codes department, not only to ensure that those operating within our cities have the basic insurance coverages, but additionally, it provides the city with, exactly what Mark was just saying, current names, addresses of the contractors. If, if we need people to go out to bid on projects, we have a list prepared of our city contractors who we can reach out to in the different areas. And it's a basic record of experience of the building contractors in town. I've written out some basics here for building contractors. What I did was I researched all the surrounding cities where I carry a contractor's license, as well as calling a few other cities outside that area to see what they required for a contractor's license. So we can do a minimum, you know, residential contractor license. Um, I've laid that out here. Everyone can take a look at it. Also, and this is something I feel desperately needs to be taken care of as quickly as possible, we need a utilities contractor license. And I've laid out the minimum on that, and I want you to pay attention that with both of these, there are bonds that must be carried. Which is a very basic thing for anyone who does any kind of work in any other city, except Fort Scott, you got to carry a bond. I want these utility contractors who are working in our cities bonded to, to, at a minimum, that amount. Because I'm tired of them tearing up our utilities, tearing up our roads, and the city has no recourse. Because number one, they don't have a license to work in our town properly in the first place, and two, they have not bonded themselves to the city so that we can recover expenses. And again, I'll reference just recently, the two sewer lines that were cracked open by a utility performer in town, and the city had to repair both of those. So that's money coming out of our coffers that we could be using for other items, simply because we're not requiring these people to be licensed in our town and or bonded with, within our city. I've laid out the basics for, uh, general aggregate, general liability insurance. And then below that, I said additionally, we can categorize at additional levels. And this is what Pittsburgh, Joplin, Alatha, all of the main cities around us do. So there's a commercial contractor license. It explains what they can do, what they are allowed to perform, the requirements, the bond, the liability, the experience. And like I said, you know, for commercial contractors, in every other city, they're required to have somebody on staff with an architectural degree or an engineering degree. Class A general contractor, again, it lays out exactly what that is. Scope of work requires so much of a bond, general liability, how many years of experience and or trade school degree, architectural degree or engineer on staff. And then you have your class Bs and Cs. So class B would be a, a lot of people who currently work in this town. So this is what would be required of them. This, this lays out what they can do as a contractor, makes it very simple, so there's no questions about what they're able to do, what their experience needs to be, what kind of liability they need to carry. And then we can also have a class C, which is really basic one for guys who want to go out replacing windows, doing siding, you know, anything that doesn't require, you know, the, the actual building of, of large structures. And again, it lays it out, so like everyone to take a look at this. This is something I would like us to address and get on the books as quickly as possible, especially the part with the utility contractors in our town in light of the damage that they have caused recently, the damage they continue to cause to our roadways and to our sewers and water lines, something that has to be addressed. And I prefer we address it as soon as possible.
So we need to, uh, have our city manager put this in, in proper form.
Yes, sir.
In a, uh, ordinance? So, so and have it ready for the next.
Yes.
Uh, meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that'll coincide with what, what we've got going on over here also.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd say put it with the next. My, my main thing is before, you know, thinking as a business person, I don't want to, I don't want to, any business that's happening, I don't want to slow it down. You know, it's a fine line of being safe and then, um, stopping business from happening. So I don't want to nickel and dime the mom and pop businesses with twenty-five dollar fee, fifty dollar license, having fifteen, fifty dollar permits. Because I'm telling you, it's hard as a mom and pop business to get all those.
And that, that's why in, in most of the other cities, this, this license, the contractor license is called a contractor's business license. And so then it falls into these subcategories, so that it, it falls under the business license category, so you don't have to have an additional business license as, as a contractor. But it puts these stipulations on these kind of contractors who are doing work in our town.
Yeah, I know, I totally agree. I'm just, I want to, I just want to reiterate, because one thing we know, if, if we start deterring other contractors from coming here, or people can't do it, we know what happens when supply and demand, if there's less contractors, it's going to start costing more for work to be done. And so I just want to make sure we don't push anyone over the edge where that, I mean, that takes effect, but no, I mean, I like it.
And I understand that. That's, that's why I kept these costs, the costs that I'm laying out are comparatively low to the ones that I have to pull in other towns where I currently work. And so the way I look at it is if I've got a job in town, I've got no problem going and getting licensed, getting the permits, pulling everything that I need.
Right, and we do this. I mean, we do this for Diane, like the trash trucks. I mean, we have permits. We already do it.
We license all electricians, all plumbers. We license all, um, trash collectors. Yes, we do.
Yeah, so I'm not against that. I just want to make sure.
Dance permits, we got those.
Yes, we do.
Let's not forget about that. It's called the Footloose permit.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a lot. It's like Mark said, with the, the businesses. And, and I just want to address this because it's something that I've talked about for a while now with some of the issues that have taken place. I know many, many people who have been burnt because the contractor either did not have any insurance, or they weren't licensed to work in this town. I mean, everybody remembers what happened with the hailstorm. Now, the state requires you to carry a roofing license because of that, but we're still not protecting everybody in our town from all of the other things that could happen, so just.
I, I don't believe we issue a building permit on a roof unless that person has the state of Kansas roofing certificate.
That's, yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. We changed that in 2013.
So, yeah. So we're known for roofers, just not these guys.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Go ahead.
Yes. I keep forgetting I'm the mayor. Sorry.
I appreciate the direction Mr. Wells is wanting to go because at Mr. McCoy's direction, uh, I did some research last week on this very thing that Mr. Wells is presenting. Uh, specifically, I spent some time on the phone with Tammy Crays down at the city of Pittsburgh. Um, I don't know if she's assistant city manager, but, uh, she's extremely knowledgeable on the topic we're discussing right now. And, uh, she gave me kind of a, well, here's what we charge for just a general business license. But she did say, you know, we have, uh, special requirements for contractors. And their annual fee for their business license ranges between fifty and a hundred and fifty dollars. In addition to that, uh, say you're an electrician, uh, you have to annually, uh, purchase a trade card, uh, from the city of Pittsburgh in order to conduct business there. So those are things that, uh, uh, we came up with. Uh, we have a business license application form that we can modify to meet our own needs. I guess I'm, I'm, uh, verifying the things that Mr. Wells has presented. I think they're critically important. Um, and those are things that, uh, we need to implement sooner than later. Although having said that, uh, the task of, uh, implementing business licenses is a, uh, is a huge task, dare I say, arduous. Uh, we'll have to update our website with, uh, some information, uh, maybe some online links and forums where people can, uh, get their, uh, licenses and such, uh, you know, online and be able to pay online. But, but I'm all too happy to, uh, help Mr. McCoy, uh, with this project if that's the direction we decide to go.
And I would just say, I would, I would agree with both sides, and, and if there is a side, but, uh, with Josh, I don't want to make it so expensive that we have people deterred from working here because we've got all the, you know. I agree with you also, though, Matthew. We've had utility companies come through here and take advantage of us, and it's not good. So we need to, uh, we need to look at this and address it as soon as possible. While we're writing it up, let's keep all the, the, the applications and permits and all that. Let's keep it all to a very minimum, you know.
If I, if I may, just, just for sake of providing an example, uh, city Pittsburgh charges thirty-five dollars a year for a general business license. You know, if you have a, a hair salon or fingernail salon, I mean, that's, that's nothing, thirty-five bucks, or in the course of years, like two dollars a month for, uh, for a business license. I think it's something around that range, I think, fairly, very reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, my, my main thing is, like I said, you know, high school kid coming out of high school, wanting to start a business, and, you know, all of a sudden, I got fifteen permits and fees. And so I just want to make sure we don't.
Sure.
You know, hurt anybody trying to start a business.
Yeah.
I, I completely agree, guys.
Yep. Okay, we'll write something up and, uh, get it back to us.
We'll come back to you at the next meeting if allowed to, and, uh, I'll work with Bill Downey on that. And maybe Matthew can, can provide some additional texture. Okay.
Thank you. Um, up next, uh, item D, discussion of funding of land bank from sale of first source building. Matthew, you have any handouts on that?
I don't have a write-up on this one.
Uh, Commissioners, I've had some conversation with Commissioner, uh, Jones on this, sorry, former mayor. And, and we have had different conversations. I believe last meeting I made a recommendation, and all that is is a recommendation uh, from the sale of the first stores building in order for us to provide some funds in and for the land bank, so that we can make significant progress, uh, not only in moving forward with the land bank, but maybe being able to assist in the removal of some of these seventy-seven or seventy-eight homes that, that need either extensive work or need not to be in their, uh, upright position anymore. Uh, so the recommendation I had made was for a fifty thousand dollar contribution or payment into the land bank funds for the purpose of operating the land bank. I'm only making a recommendation.
Discussion?
Yeah, my thing was, um, I wanted, uh, the codes, I mean, I don't know where the number fifty thousand came from. To me, I'd like to see codes come back and say, the years, these houses need tore down. We could need funds. To me, we're just throwing a number out there. We know the land, the tax sale is coming. Um, and I know at least four or five people have reached out and say, hey, I want this property. I'm willing to give three to five thousand dollars. So we know there's funds are going to be generated for the land bank within the next month, hopefully. And so my thing is, why fifty thousand? Where'd that number come from?
Well, I think Josh, a couple of meetings ago, we actually passed a vote, five, five to zero, that, uh, that list of seventy-seven houses that were identified as drug houses and everything else, that the codes department was going to go back and identify the ones that must come down now out of that list, the ones that are like uninhabitable, unrecoverable. And I don't think we've got that back yet, so I mean, I would make a motion to table the amount until, you know, we have that information back so we can make an accurate decision.
Good. I'll second that.
Before you vote on that, may I ask, though, that would, um, the land bank, proposed land bank, uh, general manager, please come up and, and make a comment about that? And if, if that's not okay with you, that'd be fine.
Yeah, go ahead. We'll, we'll listen to you one more time. He's up for everything. Hold on, Matt.
Josh, don't get jealous, okay? Jealousy is ugly, you know.
Whoa.
No, he said it. Um, the fifty thousand dollars actually was brought up in a sugge- suggestion that Mark and I made, because I talked about doing fifty thousand. I believe it was probably at the land bank meeting that I first, uh, brought that, uh, for the use of the first source, uh, from the sale of the first source building. What I was looking at is, uh, you know, we've discussed an average cost of around five thousand dollars to demo a house. And so if we're, with the land bank having these kinds of funds, if we had to come in and, and demo five or six houses, the funds are already there. We're not looking into the general revenues. We're not having to take any money from the budget or from city funds. It's already there, located in the land bank, and the land bank would be able then to go move ahead and, and pay for the demolitions. Um, and then, yeah, there would be fees on, to recover from those, uh, that we could charge the landowners, uh, when, uh, or the developers when they come in and buy the lot. But this allows us to move forward without having to wait for the funds to come in from other sales. We could just move forward and demo, um, because we'd have funds to. Um because we'd have funds to to work on. I understand completely where uh, almost said Mayor Jones, but Commissioner Jones is.
My question would be, so if we move forward to to demo more houses inside the city limits, it's still going to have to, the bid process is still going to have to be approved here. So what advantages far, how would you be able to move quicker than what we would as far as selecting the homes that are going to be destroyed, getting the bids, voting on the demolition, and then having?
My question to that is, if the land bank is, if the land bank is paying for the demolition, why would the city have to go out for bid for la- I mean, is the city going to have to bid every single property that the land bank deals with?
I think that's how it's happened in the past, I mean.
I mean, I guess that does bring up a point, because it will be in the land bank's name now.
Yeah.
And so that is something Bob will have to look at, because it's it's almost like a subsidiary.
Yeah, to me, it would be, to me, since the land bank would be the the entity that's in possession of the property, then by having them fu- by the land bank having funds, they could move forward and demolish the the facility or the building, and then it, you know, it doesn't have to come back, and we don't have to say, oh, well, we have to find fifty thousand dollars or thirty thousand or whatever in the budget. To demo, we can go out and say, okay, well, we have it at the land bank, we'll demo it, and then when we sell properties, we replenish
But doesn't the same process apply to where it has to be posted in the paper and the property owner has to be given the opportunity to come here and review it?
Absolutely.
Yes, the city has a process, it goes through two different resolutions, the first resolution sets a public hearing.
I think what he's saying, does that have to if it's in the land bank?
I would say.
Because that's not, I mean, that's that's a separate.
I would, that that would be an attorney question.
Oh.
Yes, sir. I'm talking about any, Bob. Bob.
Bob, we need you.
That's what I want to clarify.
Question for the city attorney.
I'm getting asked questions that I am not, you know.
As you sat down in the crowd.
So if a la- house is in the land bank and it needs to go out for demo, does it have to go through the bid process, since it's in the land bank and not the city?
It doesn't have to ha- go through the resolution process and have a public hearing?
Yes, it still has to do that, because you're taking the proper process.
No, what what I'm saying is, if the land bank already has possession of the property or the building. Yeah, the, so after the sale, af- without uh with, yeah, the land bank would tear it down, right, not the city, and they wouldn't have to go through ordinance and stuff. Yeah, so that's, that's the only thing, we could move forward faster if we. Yeah, I understand.
Right, because federal money requires, I mean, bids, so.
And and that's why I'd rather wait and see if.
Sure, I understand.
First sale to see if any properties people find to buy.
And and I mean, I know, I just got appointed to the land bank, but I'm assuming that you wouldn't make the decision to yack away and just get this guy to bid and tear it down, we would still go through.
I I would do, yeah, I would go through the committee, uh I would go through the land bank advisory committee or whatever, I I I wouldn't make that choice on my own, no, so.
Even if you had an agitating neighbor?
Even if I had an agitating neighbor, I wouldn't do that, yeah.
So Kelly, do you have anything that you can add, having dealt with the land bank?
Yeah, there are several avenues that you could take that we uh utilized over there. One is to solicit recycle, and a lot of people are recycling lumber these days. The the other thing is getting the city involved, because it is city property now, it's the land bank. Um the other thing we'd probably like to see is uh that some kind of the thing that we're working county where we can actually have a little more landfill at a cheaper rate. So if we can kind of start moving, I mean, I I think we, instead of, we did have money, but I don't, I, we used to have ten thousand dollars a year, and we moved a lot of houses. It, we uh, when we were crushing them ourselves, our roll-off fees were four hundred bucks to do a house. So uh and that was our landfill and everything. So it, you know, a house doesn't weigh much, some of those old junky ones. So the the big thing is, is is to not get too far out there your horses, but, you know, you can fund it. Um but the other thing of it is, how much do we want to let the city kind of get involved to? If we want to solicit that house um as somebody could re- you know, repair it and and uh restore it or recycle it, and then we just pick up the junk and the trash? That was the other thing we did.
The land bank is set up where it's almost an advisory, where they still people present it to them, and then it comes back from commission to actually approve. Yeah, what, do you think if Ed Trulove came and spoke some, do you think that would be good?
Well, Ed trained me.
I I knew he did, so I didn't know.
Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah. In fact, then after after that, I started training Ed, but, yeah, yeah, but anyway, we we really did, in fact, he wanted to borrow our equipment. And so, but uh there's a lot you can do with the land bank and your city crew in off-hours. You know, a little bit here, a little bit there, and that kind of thing. But also, you know, uh if people want to do any, and we didn't think about that until just this last year, that people started flooding in, want recycle. They wanted uh hardwood flooring, they wanted some of the gingerbread on the housing and different things. And so, but the one thing we did do is we required them to provide liability insurance. They had to have liability insurance, and that proof of insurance had to be at City Hall. So that way, they weren't, and then we had to have a list of the people that worked for them. So so there's a lot of moving parts you can involve here, um you know, that we can look at at as we move forward in the land bank. But it does take some money in in the fund, like like uh we're talking, so.
Well, it's it's interesting, too, we have a pretty strong Amish community, and and they'll come in and a lot of times take the, you know, they want the dimensional lumber out of it and not so interested in the gingerbread things.
Or even the floor joists.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But, you know, they may not take it all, I mean, that's, that's what a lot of homeowners have been left with, they've been, you know, hey, we'll come in and get the lumber, and they'll take the good stuff and then just not show back up, but in this circumstance, at least they're getting part of it out of the way.
And the one thing we used to tell them is, is you feel, just pile it out there, we'll just load it and roll off.
Right, right.
Some people might want the gingerbread, though, I'm just saying.
Okay, good stuff.
You have a motion in a second, Mayor.
Yeah, so uh call the.
Do you want to vote? The motion was table this until you can look at an amount based on the codes department list of their structures.
Yeah.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky.
Yes.
Matthew Wells.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Do we need to provide more directory to the codes department to get the list of those houses to us before the next meeting, so that we can look at this?
I I will have them email it to you. Do you want an updated list emailed to?
Would you like an updated list emailed to all the commissioners?
Yeah, would it be too much to ask if they um cross-checked it with possible tax sale houses?
Yes.
Yes, that would be too much to ask.
Hmm.
You're asking me and I'm giving you answers.
We appreciate it.
Do you know when the tax sale is, Commissioner Jones?
Um no, I think the first one's here, twenty-third, and then I think they expect another one like a month after. They tried to, they're trying to do four this year, I think, three or four, yeah, so. Four or five years, so.
Yeah, it's been a while. Okay, so up next, uh reports of from the intercity city manager, comments.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to write a note, but um.
It's okay.
One second, talk amongst yourselves.
We can all read this Bourbon County Ready thing we just got.
Oh, yeah, we, I guess we can go ahead and move that up.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Since Rob hasn't been to the mic long.
Rob, do you want to, yeah, you want to go up and talk about it, or? I lost my copy. That short copy right there.
Yep.
You gave them all away, Mayor. So we finally got uh the printer working and was able to, actually, it was Jackson's computer more than it was the printer. But uh when I was asked, we were, we talked about this, about creating an entire uh new MOU for this, and it was my recommendation um to uh Mr. McCoy and to Ja- uh to Commissioner Jones uh that um instead of rewriting an entire MOU that we add um these three paragraphs to our current interjurisdictional agreement uh that you have with uh Bourbon County Ready. And so uh what I will do, I'll read this since um, so everyone else can hear it, um but and you have it.
That'd be good.
So it just says here, so this would be added to the current interjurisdictional agreement that you have with Bourbon County Ready for Economic Development Services. Says Bourbon County Regional Economic Development agrees to also provide oversight of the city of Fort Scott Tourism Department throughout the life of the inner jurisdictional agreement. This will include developing all digital and print advertisements, public relations, electronic media, group tours, grant writing, product development, and creating partnerships throughout the region and state. The Bourbon County Regional Economic Development Director and Boards of Director and Board of Directors will be ultimately responsible for making sure these duties, as well as other tasks, are completed by the current Tur- Tourism Director and will report directly to the City Commission on job performance, as the Tourism Director will ma- will remain a paid employee of the city of Fort Scott. The city of Fort Scott agrees to continue to provide payroll and benefits to the Tourism Director and provide Bourbon County Regional Economic Development, Inc. with remaining funds from the transient guest tax, which have not previously been encumbered, to perform the duties listed above. At any time, the Fort Scott City Commission and the Bourbon County Regional Economic Development, Inc. Board of Directors can terminate the tourism piece of the interjurisdictional agreement, as long as the terminating party gives the other party at least thirty days' notice of the change. Bourbon County Regional Economic Development, Inc. Director will provide monthly updates to the city manager and the city commission at their monthly city commission meetings, and all financial documents will be supplied to the city clerk, city manager, and city commission, so that the funds being used can be tracked sufficiently, and all state reporting can be kept up to date. So I, my recommendation is adding these three paragraphs to the current interjurisdictional agreement that you have with Ready. Um and it's, says in there that you can terminate this section of the interjurisdictional agreement if you want. The interjurisdictional agreement has a termination clause in it as well, that the city commission voted on before. Uh if you wanted to delete the entire, the entire piece as well, the entire agreement as well, so, yes.
Yeah, Rob, the verbiage in there, should we change it maybe, where it says at any time, the Fort Scott City Commission and Bourbon County, shouldn't it be at any time either the Fort Scott City Commission or the, because like this, it's, but then it talks about thirty-day notice to the other.
Sure, I, that that's fine.
Yeah, at any time, either the Fort Scott City Commission or the Bourbon County Regional Board of Juritors can terminate this.
I don't have a pen, but I'll write that in.
Yeah, I think that's good, they may want to get rid of us.
And and or, or either.
Bob can help with that.
Where is it, the, at any time, the cit- the Fort Scott City Commission and or?
And I think you just do, just change the word and to the word or, don't you think?
Yeah, you could change it to or, you could say at any time, either.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I put or there, so, yeah, makes sense, but.
And so according to this, all of the transient gas get, guest tax will be going to Ready.
No, uh uh well.
Remaining balance.
The remaining after payroll benefits and everything that is, goes into what uh Mr. Tuft's getting now. And then any other encumbered agreements, or any other agreements that have encumbered the funds. So if there's another agreement that's attached to the transient guest tax, whatever, I don't know what it would be, but. Yeah, the Charlie driver is a good one, that's connected to this, so those.
Uh Bob. I think there, there are entities like the good old days, uh the the fort on some of their vignettes, that money has previously been committed to help those things.
So those funds would not come to us, it's just anything um, anything that um is left over after that. And then with those funds would be held separately in a separate account uh that Ready would oversee. And then those funds would be, we would get um financials on those every month. Um and then you would be able to see where those funds were being used and what they're being used on. And we decided to do it separately, because we know those funds are need to be used on tourism, and we wanted to show that we are using those funds exactly, specifically on tourism. And so instead of co-mingling them with current Ready funds, um and funds we get from the city for Ready for economic development, we wanted to show and prove that those were used, being used for.
Does those funds come in monthly or quarterly?
Which funds?
The heads and beds?
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah, yes.
I just want to make sure that when you guys, I mean, I don't want to pay you at the beginning of the quarter, and then we have things come out at the end, so I just, I don't know if we need to put an agreement when's the money's be transferred, or if that just.
Uh you transfer it when you transfer it, that's, that's, I'm, I mean, if if, I mean, I'm not going to be over here trying to bill-collect you, be like, hey, I haven't got my check. Um yeah, when you transfer it, you transfer it, but also, it's, I think it's known, you know, both ways, that, you know, the funds that we need to do the job correctly need to be there. Um and 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 some of the funds Ready has already um for economic development, there is some marketing that we're using those funds for. So I mean, that's the benefit here, is we already have some funds that we're marketing the county with, that we can use to help boost tourism as well. And so, um you know, there is going to be some funds there at the beginning, you know, even as we wait on transit guest dollars to come in, you know, that we can, we can provide and do some of these marketing opportunities and things with. But um, you know, we we started doing this, you know, the the conversation started with economic development and trying to streamline services and and trying to stop duplicating services, so the taxpayer doesn't have to get hit three times, two times. And it, it just makes sense to do tourism, and we started with economic development, but now to do tourism, because, you know, the county has a lot of opportunities in the, in the county that need, you know, that we're going to market on tourism, and there's no reason for us to to market something in the county at the same time we're trying to market something in the city. And Jackson's did a great job of marketing county assets in the uh up to, up to date and up to this point, and we can continue doing that. Um I just think under the, how we got it written here would be a great fit.
Bob, Diane, and Mark, what would happen with the tourism board?
So.
That's not been addressed, but that is set up by city ordinance, the tourism board is, so I don't know if they met even regarding this at all, but.
So we probably need to have a meeting discussion, whether we want to retain them, and and maybe they can still offer some kind of service or recommendations or.
Yeah, it's up to you, I don't, I'm I'm staying out of that part.
That's smart.
Yeah. Commissioners, remember that uh all of your boards serve at your pleasure, and that they have been created in an ordinance for the purpose of benefiting uh us as an entity, the city of Fort Scott, and the different processes that they assist in. Remember, they are an advisory board, so they advise, and if you wanted to change an ordinance, you could, you could uh remove it, uh you could create a new one. There's already a Board of Directors at Ready uh that that.
That's what I was going to ask, if you can go through the the um breakdown of the.
Board.
Board again.
So the board, my Board of Directors consists of thirteen members. Um Peyton, um help me with their name, Coin, Coin, yeah. Uh Mr. Jones, um, uh Mr. Jones, Mr. Motley from Landmark Bank, and Mr. Motley's at um at-large. Mr. Jones is the city of Fort Scott representative. Mr. McCoy is a at-large member. Um Mr. Stewart, uh Dave Stewart is the USD two thirty-four, did I get that right, two thirty-four here, two thirty, okay. Uh Superintendent, yeah, it's Union Town. So two thirty-five uh is represented by Superintendent there, which is Mr. Howard. Um Bronson is represented by Ms. Kelly Perry. Um Union Town is represented by one of their commissioners, Jess Ewens. Uh Mapleton is represented by Mr. um, oh, George, um Trucking Company. No, uh it's Trucking Company. Post, Greg Post, that's it, Greg Post, sorry. Um the county is represented by Mr. Commissioner O'Hare. Uh Community College by Mr. Fewens. Um I I always leave out people.
So to, so to that point, there would be nobody on there who would be a hotel owner?
Well, that's my only thing, is when we consider the tourism board on keeping it or not, that maybe they can offer some service.
I I I know that um there has been conversation with Mr. McCoy about if this was to happen, would there be another position opened up on? would there be another position opened up on the Bourbon County Ready Board of Directors? And in that conversation, the answer was no. Through our bylaws, there's a specific reason why each member is presented. It's not industry focused, it's community and based. So every community in the county, the county itself, the college, and the school districts with two at-large. Now, not to say one of the at-large members couldn't be.
Or a subcommittee?
There could be, yeah, we could have subcommittees all day long. I mean, they're not, they're not appointed by a bylaw. So we could add subcommittees upon subcommittees. I mean, part of what we're going to do this year is start adding subcommittees for certain aspects like small business and entrepreneurship.
My only thing to say in that is, you know, this is heads and beds in the city.
Sure.
And we're doing good work with the county, but there is one, I'm going through my head, there's one representative on that board that lives in the City of Fort Scott. And the other twelve live outside the City of Fort Scott. And so that's my only.
I agree.
And I'm on, and I think the board is great. I'm on there and all the people are great, but that's just something I think we need to consider.
I, I understand where you're coming from. And Bourbon County Ready was really set up to encompass the entire county. But, I mean, I will say, if there is, when there's tourism in the county, if somebody comes into the county to go hunt or fish or attend the Rock Park, they're filling up with gas in Fort Scott and they're eating in Fort Scott and they're staying in most times in Fort Scott. And so I just, I want to, you know, reiterate that, that Ready does do a lot for the county. You know, those grants we've been giving out or countywide, a lot of the communities receive those and entities receive those. But what's good for Bourbon County is obviously good and great for the City of Fort Scott as well. And so we, we believe that wholeheartedly and vice versa. And so we believe that wholeheartedly and we believe this tourism, getting tourism under Ready and allowing us to move forward as a team, Jackson and I, to do some pretty amazing things, I think, that are coming up, coming down the pike. And so, are you going to gavel me?
Come in.
I would like to have Kelly comment on what we're doing and get his input on the advisability as he sees it. On the.
Tourism.
He wants you to comment on what we're talking about.
Well, as you, as you know, I mean, obviously we do want to keep it towards tourism. And right now, as we, I think it's going to be really important to include, like the commissioners said, include the Tourism Committee that you got and then kind of come up with a hybrid that makes sense. And so it's something that needs to be really kind of looked at a little more in detail, I think. And I think Josh has kind of put his thumb on that. So I would really support that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I would also say the same thing. I'm wondering, like, when you said there's no hotel represented, you know, those are people that are very adamant about getting people in here. And especially Bill, he's worked, you know, really hard at keeping the hotel going, you know.
Well, and I, I think you, you know, Mr. Michelle was, it was a huge driving force of moving this to Ready. It was, was a big, big mouthpiece of moving this to Bourbon County Ready. But we, my first meeting with the Board of Directors, and Josh can attest to this, so can Mr. McCoy, when we met, it was there in my presentation that at some point in time I believed and I felt, wholeheartedly felt that tourism should fall under Bourbon County Regional Economic Development because tourism is economic development. It is. And so that was back in June before we ever had a conversation about doing this. And so, you know, I think it's always been a part of the plan down the road. It's just been some very vocal individuals that had a great idea that's kind of moved this forward at the speed it's moved forward.
Mark, you wanted to speak?
Mayor, I, I would suggest that you allow Kelly at least ninety days to evaluate the transient guest tax board and to come back to this group with the thoughts and ideas and suggestions with and through the Tourism Director and Ready. Because it's going to take ninety days to flush this out for everybody to know and understand how we proceed.
Right.
I think a transient guest tax board, as, as our clerk has said, it's in, it's in the ordinance. We can't, there's no reason to change it at this point. And so why not spend the next three months at least in identifying the positives and the opportunities that may exist in making any changes, but there's no need to do that change at this point. They would still advise the commissioners and they should provide advice to, to the, to the Ready Board also for ninety days. And then, then you, then you can make further decisions because this man over here needs some time to get his hands around everything here. There's a lot of room to get hands around. So some, more than others, but, but there's, there's, there's a lot to do. And, and his hands are full. And, and I, I, I know how difficult it was walking in the door. And I, and I would just ask you, please give him an opportunity. And I know you all will, but I think ninety days is a realistic time to expect him to come back to you with some positive recommendations.
Sure.
So the question before us right now is, do we need to vote on this amendment?
The question before you is to add this to the interjurisdictional agreement that we currently have with Ready. However, I will say if you're going to take ninety days to, to figure it out.
No, ninety days to evaluate the transient guest tax board. I was only referring to the transient guest tax board. I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. I was only referring to the transient guest tax board and their participation in this.
And in that ninety days, I would say if you want to put together a presentation of what a subcommittee would look like under Bourbon County Ready possibly.
Yeah, would this all be?
It's fine. But I would say the subcommittee would be, if you, if you want to remain your, if you want to keep your transient guest tax committee that, like it is today, I would just, you would take those people and make it a subcommittee under Ready. And they, I mean, that's the easiest way to do it. There's no, it's not a, I mean, that's, that's how I would do it. If you want to keep the committee the way it is today, they could just be a subcommittee under Ready. Or they could continue to be an advisory committee for the city. And then when they, when they have it, you know, I could show up and, and.
I'm just wondering with this whole thing being new and coming together, would it make sense to revamp the whole committee and have them all approved by the City Commission?
I'm going to let you make that decision.
For some reason, this turns out to be a bad thing, not that it will. But you don't go through an ordinance of doing all your tourism and then have to go through an ordinance of. I, I think sixty days, ninety days is a good evaluation. And then at that point possibly revamp it or.
That's fine. I mean, if that's the way you.
All of your advisory board members serve at your discretion. They are approved by you. There is a, a term for members on the advisory boards. So Diane could bring that back to us so we would all know who the exact members are on the transient guest tax board, where they are and their terms.
Chairman is Brian Ritter. And Jackson could probably name him off the top of his head. I can do a few.
Right.
He probably knows him off the top of his head.
I know like three or four, I think.
Yeah, if you could get us a list of those and their term limits and all that.
Hotel and restaurant industry, most of them are.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept these three paragraphs with the word that Tim changed from and to or in there. I'll second that.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky.
Yes.
Matthew Wells.
Yes.
Devin Allen.
Yes. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the interim City Manager, if he's ready yet.
Yes.
Okay.
I was asked at the last meeting to work on two or three different projects. One of them was the SRO officer. So I have only had the opportunity to have a side discussion with one individual. I need to set up a meeting with Kelly now and myself, which would also include the Superintendent of USD 234, Ted Hesson, and with a county commissioner who's been assigned to this, Jim Harris, for us to sit down and to come back to this commission with a plan of how we could proceed forward collaboratively with the city, the county, and 234 adding a new SRO officer. That would also include a discussion with Mr. Farmer, our attorney, to make sure everything that we would be proposing would be proper and legal.
If the rest of the commission don't mind, if I could be included in that since Jim and I kind of been working on this for a while, if you guys don't have any problems with me being a part of that.
And I think if you assigned a commissioner to do that, that would be great.
Yeah, I assign you to do that, Josh. I give you the power. It's nice.
The second item you asked me to talk about was C and D. And you may have known, we had Christmas and New Year's holiday between the last commission meeting, so many, many folks have been on vacation. I also had a discussion with Commissioner Jim Harris on this subject. And I've had a brief conversation with our attorney, Bob Farmer, on us proceeding forward with a proposed contract that we would present to you and then to the city, to the county for our agreement for the use of C and D. That would include the thirteen point eight acres in, in exchange for a, a, an amount each year in perpetuity, which means a boatload long time for us to dispose of C and D out there. This goes back to the land bank and it goes back to our commission and our city needing to dispose of houses that need to be torn down and make this a much more viable situation, much more cost effective. I, I almost fell out of my seat when I heard our new city manager say it was four hundred dollars C and D over there at your landfill. So maybe we should take it over there.
Yeah.
If we can get four hundred dollars, we'd like to know if we could take it over there.
You're not the only one that fell out of your seat.
That's just roll-off costs.
Yeah, that was the roll-off. That was the box cost.
They actually let us dump for free.
Oh, even better. Probably shouldn't have said that in a public meeting.
I don't know. It was, I don't know.
Well, yeah, that's.
So those two items, I will work with Kelly on.
That's awesome.
If that's okay with the commissioners.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
The last thing is, is that I have, I, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you gentlemen and the lady commissioner that left. I, I know when you took a gamble asking me to accept this position, you did take a gamble. And there, there was one commissioner who specifically was very concerned about me coming into this position and performing and making sure that I was not in any way, shape, or form siding or favoring toward the county. And I made sure that everything I did did not. I, I don't, I don't know if there's anybody here that would agree that I favored them or, or called them that in any way, shape, or form. It's about the City of Fort Scott, the betterment of the community of Fort Scotians. It was about the viability of the city employees and making sure that they have been able to function and do their jobs and know that they're supported. And I, I'm very proud and I was floored. I, I almost went, you know, the older I get, the more I get teary-eyed. I am very honored that you gentlemen that represent the city here, these two staff gentlemen over here that took the time to recognize me. It is truly an honor and a privilege to have had this opportunity. I, I believe that it is a right of people that, that you should give of your time back to your community. That is why I chose to accept the salary that I asked for. You did not offer me a salary. I, I negotiated this salary and, and I did it because it was the right thing to do. And my wife would hate for me to say I would do it again, but, but, but honestly, and I, there's nothing else I can say. You gentlemen truly gave me an opportunity of a lifetime and, and I'm very, very thankful of it. And, and I thank you all. I thank the citizens of Fort Scott and all the staff that I've had the opportunity to work with here. It's only been six months, but we've grown close together and you do have a great staff of people. And the relationship that we're building with the Ready, with our economic development person and now our tourism person, the collaborative role that we have in, in support from IT in the county is going to save the city thousands of dollars that hopefully we can put back in developing our employees. I, I believe Kelly that the place you're taking you over today is certainly better than it was on August tenth when I accepted this job. And, and I'm truly here to help support you if you'd like me to. And, and so on that, I say thank you very much.
Mark, and, and I know on behalf of probably everyone, we'd like to say thank you for what you've done. It's been, you know, it's been honestly really cool to get to know the other side of you because everybody's known Mark in the community for, forever as, as the contributor with, he, he wants your blood all the time. He asks for your blood. He asks for everything.
Red Cross Blood Drive, don't forget, coming up again.
That's right. We all know about that because of you. And that's, that's another good organization. Everything's good that you, that you've helped us out with. And, and like I said, it's not all been good times. There's been a lot of, a lot of tough situations, but we, we walked through them and, and I think we're in a better place. And we appreciate you negotiating that salary you did with us because that's, that's, you know, seriously been able to keep more money in the city coffers to do things with. So we're, we're, we're deeply indebted to you. So.
Right. And one, Kevin has many stories, but one of my favorite one is the, the two thousand and five fire and what you did down there to all the people. And so, I mean, just hearing that and what you've done, the, the work you do, it doesn't go unnoticed. And so I, I appreciate also the last six months.
Yeah, and just to, just to, just to inject there what Mark did at the fire that Josh is talking about is when that fire went down, Mark showed up and he had four hundred hamburgers, four hundred cheeseburgers, four hundred french fries, four hundred drinks. He had all kinds of four hundreds. And he fed all the firemen. He fed anybody that helped up there that night and wouldn't accept a dime for it. So it's really cool. So you've done a few good things, Mark, but enough about you. So.
That's true. You should really talk about the new guy you hired because he's great.
Yeah. So City Commissioner comments? Nope.
No, you missed B. B.
Oh, City Manager comments. Oh, well, I thought that was.
I guess the other things are just the work sessions are just noted here.
Yes, yes, they are.
That's tomorrow.
Do you see them on there?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, so on one five, that's tomorrow, four thirty to six thirty, a proposed work session for streets. Now, I, I've invited Earl's Engineering. Pete, do you know if you're going to be here or will Jason be here? Plenty of time to get back here, so.
Actually, we'll try to get back.
Okay. We'd appreciate it.
Hey.
I want to, I want to mention Peter. He's had some difficult problems with his, his foot over the past three months. We haven't seen much of him. We haven't, we haven't seen enough of him, but he has an excuse, a good excuse.
And I do apologize for not being around.
I just, I'm hoping that, that you're going to be all right, going to get over and you can get back to helping us.
I will. I, I do apologize for not being around the last few months, but hopefully that changes and, and I'll be back down here and start working more with you.
If it, if it doesn't fare too well for you, I've got some extra legs. So.
I knew you were going to say that.
No, that's your right one. Never mind.
Commissioners, by the way, these are proposed dates. So if, if there's a problem with them, please feel free and Kelly and I'll reschedule. The second proposed is brick streets only. That would be a complete topic for the second meeting. And that's five to seven PM on the thirteenth. So if those sessions are okay, we will go ahead and, and conduct those.
Were we going to change the work session tomorrow to a four twenty-five or four twenty or?
No.
That was only if we had a.
We already, we already killed it right there.
Tourism thing, we settled it.
So is four thirty work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's for me.
I'm sorry, I, I missed that and I highlighted it and yelled.
Okay, now the City Manager's comments.
Well, today we went out and met with a lot of the city supervisors, got a call from Sketch, Kevin, and kind of hit a snag out there with the pole moving. We reached out to Jason Dickman and we're kind of, kind of lean on Earl a little bit to kind of build a fire under him a little more, get the utilities to move those poles. We're really shut down without that. So if you could kind of build a fire under him a little bit. But anyway, things are going to start picking up as we get things rolling again. And, you know, I look forward to, you know, kind of getting things going.
Appreciate it. Yeah, you, you wouldn't have a lot to report being here less than eight hours. So we, I appreciate you getting on that today too when I called Mark and you guys ran right out there and got ahold of Pete and everything was good. So appreciate all three of you guys for looking at that. Up next, discussion to terminate the guy we gave the plaque to, Mark McCoy.
I don't know if you have the, a copy of the contract?
We have them all.
I, I have them all.
Yes.
So here's the copies of the contract. It does say that there's fifty, you need to give fifteen day notice. I've seen, I don't have a copy of the contract. But I would, I, I leave that for your decision for you folks. I've seen how I don't have a copy of the contract, but, uh, I would, uh, I, I, I leave that for your decision for you folks. There's this many pages?
Nine, six.
So on page five, first paragraph, uh, the bottom of the first paragraph, "This information shall be returned within 15 days of the termination of agreement." Maybe.
That's just the stuff you're supposed to give back.
Oh, give back. Okay. If I'm a part-time employee, do I still have to give it back, Bob?
I don't know. $9 an hour, are they qualified as part-time?
Yeah, your old employees are making more than you are.
I don't see it here where they're going to terminate your contracts.
Yeah, you may be.
That was that ironclad $9 an hour contract.
Yeah.
Well, it is hourly, so the good part is if you folks want me to work, you know, three hours a week, nine hours a week, 12 hours a week. I, I, if, uh, if there's, hey, why not make a recommendation for yourself? A $9 an hour, how bad could it be? Um, I, I think you should evaluate with your city manager and ask him how he wants to proceed.
Right. I, I think, uh, I think the best thing to do is, um, we've discussed before, probably go ahead and recommend termination of so many days and let's say 14 days, that gives the next meeting, gives, uh, Kelly time to see if he wants you to stay around or not. And then, uh, I mean, he has the option to hire anyone, uh, hourly. So, um, so since we can control the contract, I don't want to keep a contract that Kelly really has no say in. So I'd make the motion to terminate your contract in 14 days.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm just saying, there's nothing against you, but this is what.
No, 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 no. My wife would love this, yes. So, I mean, no, I mean, I, I knew when you got a new city manager. I mean, you can't have two. And I will assist Kenny.
Legally, Commissioner, your point's well taken. There's only one person at this table that can hire or fire anybody and that's our new manager.
Right.
And so it'd be perfectly within his purview if he wants to keep Mark around to go ahead and do whatever it is that he chooses to do because you shouldn't have two employees under your, right, purview. But we could suggest to him.
Oh, of course you can, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So does the motion need to be, um, keep Mark on as an advisor for 14 days? Is it terminated contract after 14 days?
Yeah.
Yes, I think that's perfectly proper. And yes, Commissioner, you can suggest to him, keep this guy on or whatever.
And, and at that point in time for the 14 days, if Kelly says, Mark, I don't need you today, take the day off. He's hourly anyway, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Josh Jones.
Yes.
Matt Wells.
Yes.
Sorry. Tim Van Hooky.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes. Up next, we have the human resource director.
Yeah, Commissioner comments.
Oh, we're going to go with that first? Okay, next time. Uh, Commissioner comments. Pete, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I do. I think that, uh, we're, uh, we're starting on a, on a new year and a new attitude. I see we have, uh, a lot of five zero votes tonight. Uh, two years, I've never seen that. Uh, I even voted, uh, yes. Uh, and, uh, and I did that for a purpose because I want, I want to see unity that we have here. And, uh, I'm, I'm proud that, uh, that, that we, uh, we can all see, uh, things the same way. Uh, I want to, uh, impress upon the, uh, the commission, uh, that is, it, it is our job, uh, to define, uh, how the city is going to be, uh, uh, managed. Uh, and that, uh, it is our responsibility to set policy. And I think, uh, that with the proposed work sessions that we have coming up, I think that's the start. Uh, and, uh, I can look back, uh, two years ago, we had a work session, uh, uh, on streets and, uh, utilities and we never had another one and we still haven't had another one. Uh, I, I, you know, that has to, uh, that, that has to be a, a part of what we do. Uh, I think that, uh, that we've got, uh, the engineers in place, uh, who are going to help us. I think that we've used, uh, the past year, people are, uh, upset, concerned that we didn't get a lot of work done. But I made a statement six months ago that we're, we'll use this year as a springboard for next year. I think that we're, uh, we're poised to get, uh, a lot of work done. We have, we have, uh, three, uh, waterline projects, uh, i- it ready to, uh, engineer, uh, which we, in, in, in previous years, we've never had that. We've got three, uh, we've got three, uh, storm sewer, uh, projects that we're engineering right now. Uh, and, uh, we have, uh, uh, streets that we're, we're now able to look at our streets more objectively and, and, uh, uh, I've learned a lot of things, uh, about the streets and how the, the streets are designated. Uh, I know where our priorities should be and, uh, along with, uh, our engineer and, uh, city manager and the board, uh, I, I think that we can point this, um, this city into a new direction where we're not, uh, reactionary, we're, we're proactive. Uh, we're going to get a five-year plan put together. First of all, we're going to get a one-year plan put together and, uh, that's going to be based on logic, uh, and, and not priorities or not, uh, you know, favoritism or anything of the sort. So, uh, we're, we're looking at Cooper Street. That's the reason we were, we were looking at it today. Cooper Street right now is two years behind. Uh, that was a 2020 project. Uh, and I think that, uh, I think that we, uh, that Cooper Street is, is, should be, uh, a number one, uh, priority, but that's not necessarily based on the desert, street designations and the traffic count, uh, that we have. I, I've found that we have traffic counts, uh, uh, from the state. We have street designations from the state, uh, and we have responsibilities from the state. Uh, Wall Street is a high, high priority. Uh, and, uh, we, we have, I think we, we had projected doing a mill and overlay on Wall Street, uh, for the coming year, uh, with no participation from the state. And I, I, we're going to take another look at that and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, we, we have participation from the state to the point of 90% of the cost. Uh, and, uh, we, we, these are the type of things that we, we've got, we've got in our, in our back pocket now. And it's time for us now as a commission to start using these, these, uh, 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 positives that we have to get this ball rolling and I'm, I'm anxious, I'm excited about getting it going.
Very cool. Uh, up next, Tim Van Hooky, do you have?
Yeah, again, um, welcome, Kelly. Welcome, Kelly. Glad that, uh, you're here. Uh, Mark, again, can't thank you enough for everything you've done for the city. I mean, I'm thinking about hiring you at those wages if I come up with something. That's, that's pretty cheap stuff.
Yard maintenance.
Yeah.
I got the rest of the house to move.
And, um, again, um, you know, brand new year, uh, hopefully brighter days ahead. A lot of potential here, looking forward to working with everyone to do what's best for Fort Scott. Um, only question I had as part of my comments was, and I remembered it when you were talking about the streets, did we look at pedestrian crossing signs? Okay. I, just briefly, I talked to Mark, you know, I think it's great. We took down the stop signs on National. However, the crosswalks, even though repainted or faded and there are no signs marking pedestrian crossings. And I got to tell you, me and, me and my dogs have almost been wiped out while we were in the crosswalk. So if we're going to have the stop signs down, I'd, I'd like to look at putting some pedestrian crossing signs out there to alert people that, you know, there's people walking across National. And that's it. Happy New Year.
Uh, Matthew.
I want to echo what Tim said because I've had many people come up to me, um, in the last month to talk to me about that particular intersection there at Second Street, um, because they're walking back and forth, going to the post office, going to the, to the courthouse. And everyone that I've talked to has almost been hit while out in the middle of the road because those stop signs have been removed. So definitely that's something that's a priority. Kelly, I'm, I'm excited with the abilities that you bring to the table and, and what we want to get accomplished here in the next few years. I think it's going to be great what this commission will be able to do when we all come together and work for the benefit of this city. So I'm really excited about that.
Mark?
Well, I didn't get to work with you, but I know you and I appreciate you very much as a person and a member of this community. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you did stepping in like that. That is something that a lot of people would not have done. So thank you very much. And with that, let's get after it this year. We got good things to do.
Right, right. And welcome to board, to both of you guys this year. Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I want to hit on a couple of things. Pete said, where are we at? We need to look at the, the state said we need to redo the agreement anyways we had because it's an old agreement, right? When we sat down with the state KDOT on the connecting links agreement.
Well, the, the connecting link agreement is, is, is put forward by the state.
Right. And they, they have a new one that they're putting out for, so they're supposed to, that they've been doing other, they're working to get to us. And so, and the other thing is this, is it C clips? That's the, the 90%, I think. So we've never, as far as I know, used that in a long time.
Yeah, I think at one point in time we did. I, I'm looking way back, but I, recently it hasn't been utilized.
Yeah.
But I think that Kelly is well versed on, on that and I know that Pierre is. So I think we have to give the direction
Right.
to, uh, to Kelly and to get the engineers to get us, uh, started on that C clip agreement.
Yeah. Um, three things I have, I, I know we asked to hold money at the, the lake, but I really would like to get some fishing docks back out there that were out there 20 years ago. Um, and the other ones have just been dilapidated. We just do away with them. And so I would hope we could spend some money. Um, I've been asked this repeatedly by mainly high school kids, say, we ain't got no place to fish out there no more. We need to, you know, we want to go outside and fish, but all the docks are gone. So if we could somehow get a few of those docks back, that would be great.
Should we, in saying that, would the proper thing to do be put, um, our, uh, who's in, who's in charge of the lake, Mark? At this point?
Doug Guns.
Okay, let's get, my suggestion is we get Doug to get us the pricing. Find out what the pricing is on the ones that we have out there right now. And possibly those be moved to the different areas, Josh, because they're not very boat friendly. Anybody that's traveled in a boat out there complains about the bumpers, that those docks are so high and they just tear up bumpers. They'd make good swim platforms. Maybe we can move those to a different location and then order in more boat-friendly, um, handicap accessible docks at the front that everybody's going to be able to get up to, get out, access, you know, the, the loading ramp. And I think that would be a good suggestion and I'm, I'm all for that. I mean, I think, I think we give him the direction to get the pricing on it and then we go for it.
We just let us know what the pricing is. Um, the other thing I keep asking at meeting Memorial Hall, have we gotten anywhere with looking at it or, um?
So about two weeks ago, I met with Jason and we talked about him coming up with plans. I don't know, uh, Mr. Earl, have you heard of anything from Jason in regards to some plans on our Memorial Hall?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Earl will follow up on that and whoever comes to our meeting tomorrow can give us an update.
The other thing we've talked about, and I really want to hopefully start is we've talked three months ago about bonding out, um, sewer work, um, water work and, uh, street works, but they have to be our many thoroughfathers to do on that for streets. But I think with rates as low as they are, uh, we need to look at doing 10 years worth of work, um, in the next year or two. Would love to look, get with our bond attorney and see what the process would be on bonding out sewer work and water work, some water.
Josh, what I'd like to see us do is break it into projects and that's where we can do a workshop and, and maybe get with, uh, Earl's and.
We have, uh, we have four sewer projects, or stormwater projects, right? I believe we have, we have three.
Three.
We have three or four designated water projects also.
Right. And see, we can get CDBG money if we'll
Yes.
not run ahead of our money, our, our, uh, grants. I, I think it'll behoove us to go after those grants so we can get up to $600,000 on a match, so.
And then, um, yeah, I mean, because we've talked about before, maybe using one of those for the Memorial Hall if, if not.
Yes, yeah. And, and you can do that on building restorations.
Um, so I just want to keep that in the eyes. So, I mean, I know I've talked to Michael Mix and he has a million dollars worth of work already in sewer that could be done. And I think we can bond out, we did some numbers, um, what we could bond out. So anyways, I just want to keep that, um, in our minds. Um, the other thing is, uh, I just want to echo on what they, you know, brighter days ahead. I think we've done a lot of good things. Um, I think we can always look at and say, hey, there's brighter days ahead. But I think what we've done in the past year has still been good. But I think there's, we've set some groundwork for a lot of things we've done in 2022. Um, other than that, Mark, once again, thank you, um, for doing this over the last six months. Once again, thank you to Randy and Lindsay. Um, and I appreciate it being mayor for the last year. I know it was kind of unorthodox how it happened and even being put on. And I appreciate Kevin, Lindsay, I mean, everyone for the opportunity to do that and actually be here and actually try to win one, actually get elected this last time. That was a joke.
That's been running Jeff's in quite a while.
But other than that, Kelly, glad to have you here, really excited just from watching going forward, some of the things you've done, people talked about, really excited to have you here, um, and just be ready to work. Because I think, I know a few of us are going to probably expect big things from you, so.
I brought my work boots.
Yep. Other than that, um, I think that's it for me.
Thanks, Josh. Uh, okay, so I just had a few things. One, to touch on, uh, what Josh said about Memorial Hall. It, it is a big deal and we talked about, you know, getting, getting it all prepared to go out to bid for the steps. The steps are just crumbling out there. We, we got to get something. That's one of the biggest assets that we have in the community. I know that that was built a long, long time ago and, and we lost a, a, a good person, uh, this last week, uh, right before Christmas, Mike Hanson. And he was, uh, he, he passed from COVID related issues. And, uh, he was big with the American Legion and I spoke to his kids and they, and he said that that would, you know, that was something that Mike was really excited about when we talked about it at the meeting here a couple of weeks ago was that something was going to be done with Memorial Hall. So I think if we could get, the sooner we can get on that before we lose the whole thing, the better. That's a great building over there. Um, one question I did have is do we, where are we at on the redoing the walls on Sharkey's and that?
There's been, uh, a multitude of emails flying back and forth between the state folks and, uh, Jason Dickman. So today, uh, Frank Halsey brought in the appropriate bonds that were necessary. I believe all of the paperwork is in place now. It has been a four-week nightmare of one thing after another, having to have this bond and this license and, uh, the, uh, the Davis Bacon Act for information. There's been so much multitude of paper because again, you're dealing with historical buildings, you're dealing with grants and such. And so, um, everybody wishes that it could have taken place much sooner. Um, I, I don't, Pete, would you have anything else on it that, that? We're talking about the Eagle Block Buildings and Sharkey's Wall and the, uh, the Freeman Wall.
Yeah, I think like you stated, it all goes back to KDH and you guys wanted to, to get those grants. And there's a lot of things that went into that in order to get that approved, much like Mark was saying. Like any grant, you have to meet all the requirements of KDH and E. And I think, uh, when it was originally stated, it was kind of stated that this was all going to be pushed through real fast and so on. Well, if you dealt with KDH and E before, real fast is another term to them that, uh, is irrelevant.
Unless you're doing something wrong.
So, I mean, yeah, they, I think they've finally gotten everything in place, but when you're dealing with them, it just takes a long time. It's not a fast process, but I think we have it. Uh, from what I understand, reading the emails, that it. But I think we have it. Uh, what I understand, reading the emails, that it's finally there and we're ready to proceed.
Cool. Okay, uh, thank you. You can have a seat. Get off that bad foot of yours. Um, and again, I want to reiterate, thanks, Mark. I mean, I think we've all thanked you enough at this point, but I want to say one last time, so I'm gonna close around that. I'm excited, Kelly, about you being here. I, you know, we've thought since the uh, you know, beginning that you're our guy. So we're really excited for you to prove that you're a guy. And 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 uh Josh, thank you for, you know, I knew you said thank you to me. I'm not just doing it because you said that, but seriously, Josh took over as mayor and did great things. I mean, he did a, he did a great job. He's the first one to volunteer for anything or to help raise money for people or whatever it is. Uh, and he's com- completely community developed or community minded. And so I thank you for your time.
Yes, I I second that, Josh. I I really appreciate the way you stepped up and and taking care of this.
Absolutely.
I I think you've done a great job. I appreciate that.
Countless amount of hours, and that's why I wanted to help get him the president so I can shovel that, that way if he wants to keep volunteering. So um anyway, um, and in conclusion also for me, thank you guys for the opportunity um to to be your mayor. I know there's probably going to be some naysayers out there, who knows, but uh I'm going to try to act as appropriate as I possibly can.
Appreciate that, too.
Yeah. I mean, we all know I'm a little squirrely at times, but uh, but I think there's, the camera's on me, so uh I'll try to straighten up that, right? So uh, that's it for me. Brad, I think you had something as the Human Resource Director?
Yes, um, before Christmas, at one of our meetings, it was brought up about the military bridge removal process. Uh, went through some bids on that. Um, at the time, Mayor Jones wanted to see what it would take for the city crews to uh remove the bridge. I did come up with some numbers. Uh, I've talked to our staff with that. And I always go worst case scenario, well, hopefully we can better that. Uh, worst case scenario would be around ninety-six hundred dollars to remove it, and that's labor. Now, that's ten days. That's expected to do that with four people, uh eight hours a day. So uh I went thirty dollars per person. That's counting all your your insurance and all your benefits, their their hourly wage. So it's ninety-six hundred dollars. One benefit that we get out of that is we get the scrap. It goes into our pockets, so into the city's pockets. So I, that is what, at the time, Mayor Jones wanted me to come up with. So it would be up to you to vote for our crews to do it. Uh, we would rather do it sooner than later uh because we want it cold because of the ground. Um, so we want it as cold as it can possibly be to where we can get down there and get that removed. It may go really, really smooth because it's already broken apart some and uh it may not take as long as what we're thinking, but worst case scenario is what I gave you at ninety-six hundred dollars. So I leave that to you to
Yeah.
discuss and vote.
And 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 I appreciate that because that's what we originally talked about. And uh, one one thing I would say though is we kind of estimated the scrap, some other uh individuals and I, so there's probably around, we're guess guesstimating around five, six thousand dollars tops scrap. So that'll help help offset the price as well. You're talking about wanting it cold. You do want freezing conditions down there because there is a massive amount of water back there. And I'm wondering if the city or rural water has a water line back in their area because we hadn't had rain in probably a month and a half, two months, and there was a foot of water standing back there when I walked back there to look at that bridge. So I think, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, we went out there um and the, long story short is there was a water leak and that water leak was corrected approximately four weeks ago. Bill Lemke found the leak and was able to correct that. But it wasn't a foot, by the way. It was seven point two inches because I measured it. Maybe your foot's different than my foot.
Here he goes with the feet, Earl. Here we go.
I measured it because I had a boot on too and it came almost to the top. It's an eight-inch boot.
So that's good. That's good. So that's
But there was, there was a lot of standing water and that would have been a significant problem for any uh company trying to get in there. The access is going to be from the south.
Right, right.
It most likely, but
Well, yeah, I ninety percent of it will be from the south. I mean, I can't imagine much work going on to the north.
Yeah, we've already, I met with Jerry and Tom. We've got a plan of how to do it. The people we have on staff, no problem.
Sure.
They're actually excited about it.
Absolutely. It's good scrapping day.
I will say, I hope, message, it's the Belltown Bridge, not Military Bridge, so you're getting some people.
Yeah, Military Bridge. You don't want to tell that.
Okay, it's the Belltown Military Bridge.
It's still standing.
I bet you it was used during the military days.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if you're, if you're going to uh select this, you're going to need to terminate, uh what what's the correct verb?
The bids.
Reject.
You're gonna have to reject all the previous bids.
Sure. And I, so, I mean, me personally, I think that's smart. I think the city will be way ahead by doing that. And I appreciate that that plan, Brad. That's a good plan you brought forward to us. So.
Well, I I would, I would advise against using uh our only uh resources for streets uh to be doing something that we can bid out. Uh, we we do that at a cost of lack of maintenance on our streets. Uh, anytime we take that crew off of our streets, we're hurting ourselves. Uh, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Uh, we should be right now uh filling cracks with hot core crack filler. We, that, anytime it's forty degrees and rising, we can fill cracks. I would hate to take that ten days or whatever away from from the maintenance that we need to have done on our on our streets. Our streets are so hurting right now that to take, you know, another two weeks uh and and do something else, I I think that we should be using those people uh for uh the crack filling to me is much more important than that bridge laying in the creek. Uh, I I think that uh that that that's what we should, that's what we should do with our our crew is is doing uh our maintenance work that needs to be done.
Commissioner Allen, I I agree with you, what you're saying. We're using four people for this project. That means we have three other people that could do what you just said. So we're not shutting it down completely. But we will be able to split the crews up. And if it's really cold, unless there's a water leak, we have other entities that we can, that we can use to grab on to help out also. Um, I would just advise to do this worksheet. It's totally up to you guys to vote.
What I would say is also uh Pete, that this might be, I'm looking at the weather and, you know, we're gonna have several several days down in freezing conditions to where they might be looking for something to do. And we don't have to do this all at once. If we got a couple of days where the weather turned right to where they could go out and do some crack filler and stuff like that, maybe they jump off of it for a couple of days and then go back to scrapping when the when the weather turns bad. Rather than set an idle.
Well, uh, a- again, uh, we we have uh alleys that are in terrible shape. We've got potholes, you know, that you fall off into. And the winter time is when we should be and we can be uh uh doing uh uh work on our on our alleys. Uh, we've got so much to do. We have, we have immeasurable amount of work to do and a limited amount of resources to do it with. And uh, so I I think that, I think that's something that we can bid out, uh, if it's reasonable. Uh, I I I I really hate to take our people and uh not be using them on our streets uh right now because of
What was our bid? Do you know what our bids were? Was it
Nine, ten thousand? Yeah, nine thousand was the lowest bid and they kept the scrap.
So this would probably save us seven thousand.
Well, i- if you take the nine thousand dollars was the bid and they're keeping the scrap, yeah, they're gonna, if they kept, if it was five thousand dollars, they're gonna, it's gonna fourteen thousand dollars.
Of course, I had scrap around seven thousand, so.
So that's fifteen thousand. No, sixteen thousand.
Right. So I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I I understand what you're saying. My my thought is, and I know we've done this, it seems like repeatedly, my thought is Kelly just got here, maybe give us ten days for Kelly to put together a plan um for the whole crew and say this, but I don't know. I mean, I think if we can save money by doing in-house, this is a good test for our employees, I think. I mean.
Well, and the other thing is Brad's estimated it ten days. And and I'm betting you anything, them them guys blow it out of the water because
I agree.
I'm betting less than a week, you know, with some good, and I and I hope we equip them with some torches. They're the long stick torches to where they're not down there with a hobby torch. We need to go rent some torches or whatever we need to do to blow that thing apart.
Is, uh, that bridge was listed on the national register or the or the state?
Military bridges, I don't think.
Yeah, this is, this is not it.
I I think I read somewhere where that bridge was listed on a historical uh register.
I don't, I I don't know.
So
I saw it somewhere.
That being said, what would, what would that, what would that mean? Do we need to contact somebody or?
Well, yeah, I think, I think that it, recognition should be given.
If it's, yeah, we need to contact SHPO if it's historic.
If it's on the registry, you need to contact the state historic preservation.
Okay, how do we find out if it's on SHPO? Or on the registry? Okay, Rob, can you do that for us?
I uh
I can show you where it's at. We can get that information to you.
I am, I I'm told it's not. I'm told it's not listed. Pete?
Pete?
Pete, I'm told it's not listed. And that comes from the HPA president.
Okay, I
So
Well, we can still make a phone call.
Yes, yeah, I mean, we're not gonna start on tomorrow, so I would, yeah. He's he's usually pretty good. So, but yeah, you're right.
If it is, we, I mean, we need to confirm that.
Yeah, and he said uh whoever can get with them, so.
Yeah, if we have confirmation it's not on the registry, then is there, what what's your guys' way of thinking here? Tim, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, we definitely need to check to ensure whether or not it's on, it's on the historic side or not before we tear it down, but help us to tear it down.
Oh, it's No, it's tour, it's not even close to, it's just a piece of metal laying in the Okay.
But I mean, if if just take a day or two to double check that.
Sure.
I I'm good. I I think it'd be a fix, such a training group. If they can get it done by the end of the time for our own city crew to take a project like that. And I don't know if they take part of the money that we get to sell the scrap.
What is the lake fund?
Lake fund? Much? Tim?
Let's fix some streets with it.
There you go. There, well, we can go with both of them, you know, fix some, fix some potholes, take that money and let's go to work. Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, if if it's not on there, I mean, where else are these guys gonna get that kind of?
Right.
Where else are these guys gonna get that kind of training to take down a structure like that in the, in that type of environment, as long as they do it safely and you're gonna supervise them, Brad?
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
Brad worked for Public Works for quite a few years.
Few years. Um, I'll make the motion to reject the other bids and go with the city crew bearing it's not on the historic register and everything's. Yeah.
I'll second.
Matthew Wells?
No.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
No.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
See, Pete, you jinked this earlier by your five oh votes.
Yeah. There you go, Pete.
Afterwards.
Uh, so a couple of other things I've got is just some recognition of every year we do a KMIT, which is our Workman's Comp um insurance company. We do a basically a survey type inspection to where we look at everything, make sure we're in codes and make sure we're up to specs. And for this year, for two thousand twenty-one, City of Fort Scott got a gold star. So that's uh very commendable to the City of Fort Scott. Um, a couple of other things I've got then, hopefully we can get out of here. It's uh our holiday schedule for twenty twenty-two. You have a copy of that. I don't know if there's any approval that needs to be done with that. Uh, just to let you know what is uh coming up. So if we're not at City Hall or you don't see city workers.
Yes, that is part of the employee handbook.
Everything's same, yes. Um, lastly, I know we've talked about this in the past, uh went ahead and got approval from Mark and talked to Kelly today about a referral program. Uh, I'll just read this memo real quick. This is all City of Fort Scott members. "We need your help getting good people to come work for the City of Fort Scott. Referrals are a very important part of recruiting new members to any company. National average is fifty percent of all new members hired are because of a friend or family referral and is no different for us as a business. Effective one-ten, twenty twenty-two, we will be starting referral bonus program for all City of Fort Scott members. If you refer someone to apply, they are hired and they complete their ninety-day probationary period, you will receive a hundred dollar gift card. This person must put your name down on their application and must be a full-time member to be eligible for this bonus. Sincerely, Brad Mackin, Director of Human Resources, City of Fort Scott." Uh, wanted to do a, make sure you saw that, keep you up to speed of what's going on. We have changed, also, we've changed our recruiting software. We went from uh I probably shouldn't say names, but we went from one recruiting software to myself and upgrade. And we have seen a ton of applicants come in over the last couple of weeks. Um, I think a lot of it is the ease of applying. And that is really helping us in all areas. We hired two for dispatch this last week. We've also hired a full-time street sweeper, which will utilize, we can utilize the person that's working there. We can utilize him and his expertise in other areas because he's uh been with us a little bit longer. So we can utilize him in other areas and that'll help us tremendously. And uh we also have about three other street interviews later this week and next week. So good things going um in the HR realm. Got a lot of things going on, working on the wage scale, to try to get that for you uh to approve and look at for next, next commission meeting. So that's all I've got unless uh questions.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Things after doing this year, did you look at the hundred dollar gift card? Um, who would that be from? Will we have a list to rotate just to make sure? Businesses or where would that be from?
Great question. Probably be uh, we could do a Visa to where they can spend anywhere they want.
I like that.
I would say that'd be the best. Keep it fair. Um, you know.
What about Discover, though? Is that fair?
If you want to go old school, go Discover.
Do American Express?
Players card.
I've got a question, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, since we voted to uh use part of our crew uh to move the bridge, uh I assume the other part of the crew is gonna be working on streets.
Yes, sir. I'm sure they will be.
Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we're not going to shut that down?
No, sir, we will not. No.
And you're gonna do it in the freezing weather?
We're gonna, we we want it cold because of the ground, yes. And in the next couple of weeks, it's supposed to be pretty cold, so. I mean, it may not happen tomorrow, but we want it to get, we want to get it, we want to get our plan established so we can go in and get it done, get out. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to have any problems when we get down there. And I, I really trust Tom and Jerry.
Tom and Jerry.
I trust Jerry and Tom to really, to really be able to do the job very well with their crew. They've done a good job. And uh I can't thank them enough for helping me understand how we can do it better.
Absolutely. Yeah, them guys are good.
We've got some good people. We got some good operators. And the good thing is the crew we have that are not the top operators see the top operators and they want to become top operators.
Sure.
So we're growing and that's what, that's how you become winners.
Brad, and the good thing is also Tom has been here for how many years now? Twenty plus?
Twenty plus, yeah.
So he's seen the old Public Works and how many employees we had and the kind of work they've done. So he's visioned that. He can see that getting back to that, I believe. So, so that's a great thing.
Yeah, I mean, we need to do a better job of commending. I mean, I think you have helped out a lot and
Absolutely.
and Jerry um in how the public works move forward. Um, I I mean, I think the three of you have really done, and I I really am excited for next year. I mean, I think a lot of stuff's gonna get done. So I appreciate the work you're putting in as well, Brad.
All right, thank you.
Is that all you have, Brad?
That's it, yes.
Great job.
Hey, I do, I forgot, I need to go call for an executive.
Hold on. Okay, what'd you want to do?
I need to call for an executive session.
Okay, yeah, read it off the paper. No, I don't want to. Thank you, though.
Um, I moved it to City Commission.
I moved it to city commission recess in an executive session for the purpose financial affairs of a corporation pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B four. In the meeting will be the five city commissioners, Mark McCoy, Kelly. Did I say Bob?
Nope.
Bob. Rob.
Rob.
Yeah, and I just need twelve minutes. So it resume and I guess Kevin time to go. So eight forty-two.
I already went. Oh, yeah, I'll second that.
Um, we can stay here.
Yeah.
Pete Allen?
No, I, I'd like to add Brad to that. Sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Tim Van Hooky?
Yes.
Matthew Wells?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Okay, okay.